I'd like to welcome those of you here at the Slyman Theater downtown New Iberia to our forum for candidates seeking the office of New Iberia City Council District Two. Tonight's forum is sponsored by the Greater Iberia Chamber of Commerce, Iberia Comprehensive Community Health Center, and our Leadership Iberia. There are a few announcements that I'd like to do before we begin this evening's program. Our sponsors wish to remind you that tonight's program is purely informational. Neither the Chamber, Iberia Comprehensive Community Health Center, nor the Leadership Iberia program endorses any particular candidate for office. Another reminder, the deadline to register to vote in person by mail or at the office of motor vehicle office is October 7th. The deadline to register to vote through the Go Vote online registration system is October 15th. Also, the Chamber is posting all the forums to their YouTube channel, which is the youtube.com/goodnewsiberia and to the Chamber's Facebook page at iberiachamber.org. I would like to now introduce our moderator for this evening's forum. Her name is Denise Broussard. She's the Chief Financial Officer for AVEX MRO. Denise?
Thank you. Gary?
Thank you, Gary.
You're welcome.
I'd like to introduce the candidates for New Iberia City Council District Two. All candidates were invited to participate and those in attendance tonight, Ms. Rosalyn Rogers, Bob, and Mr. Benjamin T. Myers. We appreciate you being with us tonight. Each of you will have 90 seconds for an opening statement. I will then ask you a series of questions and each of you will have 120 seconds to answer unless otherwise noted. Each candidate will be given two rebuttal cords that you can use to take 60 seconds to comment on something another candidate has said during their answer. To use your rebuttal cord, please hold the cord up high when the other candidate has finished their answer. I will then call on you and you will have 60 seconds to offer additional thoughts. Please place your rebuttal cord in the basket after you hold it up. Please be selective about using your rebuttal cords as you only have two. Do you all have two rebuttal cords? Yes?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, great. To assist candidates with time, we have a timekeeper and timing lights down front, right here. When your time begins, you will see a green light come on. When you have 15 seconds left to answer, you will see the yellow light come on. And when the time is up, you will see the red light come on. You must finish your sentence when you see the red light come on. If you're in the middle of a sentence, take a few seconds to finish your answer. And if you don't finish your answer within a couple of seconds, you're going to hear a buzzer. That means stop. So we all know what to expect. Let's hear that buzzer. That means you better stop. Okay. Due to time limits and to maintain a fair atmosphere, we ask that the audience hold applause and comments. All of the questions that I asked tonight were predetermined. Questions were solicited from the public and then an unbiased committee reviewed the questions and chose those that are being asked tonight. These questions have been kept in strict confidence and no one except the committee members and me have seen them. Are we ready? So we're going to begin with opening statements and we'll begin with Ms. Bob and then for closing statements, we're going to reverse the order and begin with Mr. Myers. You have 90 seconds for your opening statements. Ms. Bob, you can begin.
Good evening. First giving honor to God, who's the head of my life. It's a blessing to be here this evening with you all. I'm running for city council District Two and I've done so much work in the last nine years with the community and I just have so much more I want to do, especially with our elderly that's been in their homes for the last five years before COVID because of crime. They can't come out because they're afraid to come on their porches. We have a lot of crime here. We have a lot of murders here, especially in District Two. And it's all over New Iberia, but especially being that we have a lot of poverty and it's sad to say, but we do. And it's a lot of things need to be corrected in that area. A lot of things been left undone and it's time for some things to get done, especially for our children. There's nothing for them to do. We need activities for them, after-school tutoring, something to keep them busy and keep them off the street with the guns and the knives and the killings. And I just thank God, you know, for giving me this opportunity to be here and to run because I see a lot going on, especially in my district. And a lot of things are not being taken care of and I'm very concerned about it. And we've been left out. District Two's been left out for so long.
Thank you. Mr. Myers?
Yes. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Benjamin T. Myers. I'm a lifelong resident of District Two here in New Iberia. And there are certain issues that I would like to address that we already have on the table with our city council. For example, there's repairing of Hawken Street location, the highway. We had been allocated money long ago to get it done and it's kind of taking, moving along too slow. And I just want to ensure that when we do get it done, that we make it highway standards as it was initially so we can keep that highway classification. I want to see too that no other adjustments are made or replacing or lifting up the pipes higher. What about we would lose that status as a highway status, all right? Because that's very important, especially if we developing and working with the Western Economic Development District, all right? Those other things, another thing I would like to address is we have money coming from a minority district representative, Mr. Marcus Bright, in order to have a swimming pool built. He set money to design this pool. I think instead of the place where they planning on putting it, I think that it should be put back in the Western Park like we had initially in its inception for the design of the park as being one of our recreational tools, especially for our kids. This is something that we can use to teach our youngest how to swim and things of that nature for health and safety reasons. Also, I had the opportunity to watch kids right next door to my house, nine over there, swimming pool, all summer long, you know, it's trying to squeeze in school. It's desperately needed. And again, I look at that project as a thing where it's not a commercial thing, it's a recreation for kids. And also, I would like to have it put in the Western Park. I'm going to stop right now because the red light is on.
Okay, we're going to go on to question number one and this will be addressed to Ms. Bob. What about your education experience background makes you the best qualified candidate?
I graduated from New Iberia Senior High, class of 1983. I went to school a little while and then I ended up working in dialysis and then I went on to work for the state and I ended up resigning with the state of Louisiana. But I graduated from New Iberia Senior High in 1983 and I don't have any further education, but I'm used to working with people. I'm used to working with the community. I know a lot about what's going on. I have a lot of concerns about the Western area and maybe I don't have the education I need to have, but sometimes you don't have to have all the education to see what's going on in your community. So I do have a high school diploma, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Myers, what about your education experience and background makes you the best qualified candidate?
Well, first of all, I've been involved in the city government work since 1976 when Tyrone Charles, our first black elected official, was elected to office. I was very much a part of his campaign and went in with him quite a lot and spoke with the then mayor, Alan Diggs, and educating us on what's the city lack to work and things of that nature. But also my educational background, I went to LSU, majoring in political science slash pre-law and, you know, just studying. But I think more my education came from being involved with issues that was faced, that was faced the city council from that point on, as long as every representative that has sit in this District Two seat, I've done my best to continue to work with them on issues I think that we should address and things of that nature. But I'm well versed in what the economics that all go with District Two. For example, we need some businesses, we need some things to be rebuilt, you know what I'm saying? We need some attention. We also need to focus on what this crime in our community, things of that nature. So we have a lot of experience when dealing with such situations, you know, right on down to, I'm talking about the petty crimes, you know. So again, when it comes to our education, I've been involved with this, I'm talking about, like I said, since the seventies, the late seventies. And at the same time, learning as you go, but also when I say involved, I mean literally involved, engaging in the city council with things that I might have opposed that they were doing, things of that nature. So I've had enough experience dealing with city government to like and know that I would just be best qualified to do this job at this time and it's needed.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bob. We're going to start with you. I'm sorry, Mr. Myers. We're going to start with you for question two, which is what are the three biggest issues facing the city of New Iberia? What and how would you address each of those three issues? Mr. Myers?
From what I see, I see we have a situation like, for example, our drainage, all right? We, on the west side of town, we still having to deal with drainage. We can address that more. Also, I see where the crime is, of course, is really, it's like out of control. It's like we don't have adequate, I would say, police protection in situations like that or too many killings and shootings is going on. We need to address that. We also have the sales of drugs that seems to be open where folks can, you know, just come and go and it's just, to me, it's destroying our community and the kids coming up in our community. So that would be some of the top things that we would want to address. But also, there's a case where we have monies allocated for our area that's not getting there as fast as it should to address the situation that we're dealing with, all right? And when it comes down to economic development, you know, one of the main things would be the Hawken Street Theraphere, that's our main theraphere on the west side of town. You know, we don't want to take it and lose our highway status, you understand? Because of course it drops off your GPS system, but you don't have the commerce coming through, traveling through to support whatever we do that on Hawken Street, which is a commercial, literally all the way from Amadeo to Main Street, you know? So we need to look at issues like that, you know? We have quite a bit that we have to do, you know, and kind of make straight where it's not so right, you know? So that's pretty much it.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bob. What are the three biggest issues facing the city of New Iberia? What and how would you address each of them?
First, again, is the crime and that's nothing different. That's been going on for years. My concern now, earlier today, I went through those apartments on Anderson Street and to see them empty, doors open, they're using them to smoke drugs, they're hiding in them, they're sleeping in them. It's not safe for our area. I live right down the street from it. It's not fair. They have people that need housing now. Some people sleeping in the street and they have a whole apartment complex back there that's empty. From what I understand, that they had allotted money to get it fixed from HUD or whatever. I haven't seen nothing yet. And they're using it as stored up for drugs now and people that's hiding from the police. Another concern I have are those new lights they putting. In my area, the lights don't flash. So what that mean? Are they still recording? I had a shooting by my house a couple of weeks ago. The bullets passed right by my window. The light never went off. The police never came, you know, and it's very dangerous. Sometime I'm up all night looking at my camera and making sure, especially if my husband is not home, that my house is protected because that area, it has a lot of work to be done. And I don't think it's fair that the Western always get the bad end of the deal. So now it's time to speak up, get some ideas together and let's see some things for our kids, for all the kids, not just the black kids, the white kids, Asian, whatever. But I know in the Western, the Western part, hey, like they said earlier, they took the swimming pool and then they turn around and put the little splash pad. But if you go. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bob, question number three. Working with the public is an important part of being a city council member. Your ability to communicate with the public effectively is critical to your success in this position. In your opinion, what are some of the critical factors for communicating with the public?
I think it's very important to get out and go to door to door and listen to the elderly concern because like I said earlier, the elderly have been in their homes since before COVID because they're afraid to come out on their porches and look at the sun and watch the cars pass because they're afraid they'll be shot or killed. And it's sad at their ages, eighties and nineties, that they have to sit in the house and can't come outside because they're afraid they're going to be killed. It's just a sad thing. It's time for a lot of things to be done on the Western. Our end have been neglected a lot and it's time, it's time for some things to happen, you know? And I feel as though the Western should be equal to every other district, you know? A lot of times they allocated for other stuff, but what about us? What about the Western? We always left out. So now whoever they choose for city council in District Two, I pray that they do what they need to do to get some help for the Western because we've been left behind for so long without, without a lot of things, nothing for the kids to do, nowhere to go. So what's next? They're going to get in trouble if they're not working and even the ones with good parents. That has nothing to do with it because I don't care as much as you teach them, they're going to go and do what they want to do anyway. So the Western needs a lot of attention. I think Marlon Lewis for what he have done for the last eight years and he's done a wonderful job, but I just feel as though it's still a lot that needs to be done and it's time to be done, you know? You keep, time is passing, our kids being without, our elderly can't go anywhere, they scared to come out, they have to send other people to the stores, you know? And it's just sad. It's sad to know. I remember years ago, I was giving out food and milk at the courthouse and one of the ladies said she didn't want to give it because our end had more poverty.
Thank you. Mr. Myers, question number three. Working with the public is an important part of being a city council member. Your ability to communicate with the public effectively is critical to your success in this position. In your opinion, what are some of the critical factors for communicating with the public?
Well, first you got to be out there among them to find out what issues, what issue they're having. That's first of all, and I've always done that. I mean, this being around our district, not just around our district, throughout the whole city, all right, as well as visiting elders in their homes, you know, issues they might have, that's start off with. You have to know what problems they have before you can work towards solving them. That's to begin with. But you know, I think the main thing that scares people is the way open drug sales allowed in our, in our district. I mean, literally, it's like turning a dog loose on them, you know? In other words, and I know for a fact, when you have people using drugs like that, you been allowing it, you really, that's an effort to disenfranchise a whole community, all right? Because that's where it starts, all right? It starts right there. They away from events like this, you know, what about they should be here, at least finding out what's going on and paying attention to myself and Ms. Bob to see what we stand for in order to vote and thank for things and say with people that they want to address certain issues that they might have interest in, all right? So if we don't do that, we're going to be fighting this a long time to come, all right? And the crime, everywhere you turn around, you see kids walking with backpacks on and those kids, you better believe are carrying guns, especially since the government just made it so an 18-year-old can go and walk in a store and buy a gun. I mean, Jesus, come on, you know? What is that? You know? So again, we have a lot of issues that we can, need to address, but we can start with that one because that's the main one that's cutting us off from advancement, you understand? You know, right now, I know a lot of friends of mine who out in more concerned in using drugs because they just, it's so freely able to do it, all right? They don't even think about coming vote number one if they even register, all right? So again, you have to get out and talk with the public, but also take steps, put it to a stop, get involved, like we doing right now, you understand? Make something happen and get in the arena, fight, you know? Make it safe, cause all, you know? That's the first thing because really, we have a problem with that. We have a problem. Everyone is slightly frightened about, you know, even like you said, going outside, sitting on their porches. We had to set a rule in our neighborhood, you get, that kind of thing happen, well, we're going to have to take it personal because we need the protection. We do need it.
Okay. We've been talking about this, I think for every question. Now we're going to get down to the nitty gritty. Question number four, Mr. Myers, is given the past issues we have with drugs and crime in our city, what would you do exactly specifically in the future to address the drug and the crime problem?
Well, we've spoken of that in the past. Personally, I think this addition of the cameras that we have now is a real asset to assist in us in such a matter, you know? But we have to have these cameras feed in real time to the city hall where somebody can monitor those cameras 24/7. And when you see issues taking place, get a police out there, all right? Address them, the situation, you understand? And that would help. That would be the major thing to help, you understand? In other words, we need more patrols, all right? We, for an example, we got laws on the books that's not being enforced and it comes right on down to simple things like parking, you know? In other words, we have people parking in and everywhere at all times and we don't have anybody when it comes down to take, dealing with the traffic. We need a traffic division in our police department to help in that area, you understand? So a lot of those times, it goes traffic incidents that can cause other problems with, you know, that type of situation. So again, we got a many ways that we can fight it, you understand? We just have to be consistent in what we're doing, but we also need the assistance of the police department to do this, all right? We need to work in unison to get the job done, as simple as you can put it, you know? And again, step up, you know?
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bob. Given the past issues and what we've been talking about all night with drugs and crime in our city, what would you do specifically to address the drug and crime problems in the future?
I feel as though we should have more sufficient policing. I know we're, at this point, we don't have that and I've had to call several times and one time they didn't even show up. But anyway, we need the police department. We need more policing in our neighborhoods. At night, we in the house sleeping, they shooting, they selling drugs, they walking around with them hoodies on their head, you don't know who is who. The cameras, like I said earlier, I don't know what's up with the cameras. The one by my house been there for about, I'll say about four weeks. The blue light never came on. Is it still working? How do we know? There was a shooting right by my house. It never went off, it never turned blue. I rode around. Lot of those cameras is not even, I'm thinking that they are not even working. And if they are, what's going on? They're still shooting? If you seen it on a camera, why isn't nothing being done? So I figure it's a lot more need to be done, especially in District Two. You know, the killings, that goes back to 18 years ago when my son was murdered in front of, right by my house. And it haven't stopped and it's worse now. I've never seen it. Every time you look, someone's calling me to see can they get help to bury their loved one. And it's sad. It's happening every weekend. About a month ago, for two weeks, we went without any killings or anything. And then before you know it, be right back up again. You know, lot, lot of the times, they're unsolved. Back in the day, I had to go catch my own son killer. And today, we do have a lot of unsolved murders. I used to keep up with them, but at one point I got tired.
Thank you, Ms. Bob. We're going to start with you again, Ms. Bob. Do you consider poverty to be a problem in New Iberia? And if so, what can be done to address it?
Yes, especially in District Two. I just feel as though we should have, I don't know, look like for the elderly, there's another these people struggling to pay their bills to make it. Lot of times, they don't even have money for medicine because a bill is due. Let's have a program, let's get something where we could have it set up where every month, and not from the churches, I'm talking about through the city or something, where we could help give the elderly at least something to help, if it's to get milk and eggs or anything. You wouldn't imagine how so many people, and I'm sure it's all over, not just the Western, but I know in my area, I talked to a lot of people. And the elderly and a lot of the young people and normal people, they just went out. Lot of times, they don't have groceries, they don't have money for groceries, you know? They can't get anything, they go to get food stamps, they give them $10. What is $10? When my daughter-in-law was getting what, $1,400? That's a big difference. And those are the ones, the elderly, that needed. And they being deprived of a lot of things. And I feel every month, they should have something to go and some kind of fun or something to put together where we could help the elderly so they don't have to sit in their house hungry a lot of times with nothing to eat. A lot of people go without a lot of things that they need necessities because they can't afford them and it's sad, you know? And it's all over, but I do know, and I could speak for, for the Western because I've been there since I was two years old. So as I got older and start realizing and seeing that what was really going on, I know this, we're left out a lot. District Two is always left out for something. If it is something, I don't know about it or I find out afterward. I heard we, let's see, I heard we supposed to get something in a park. They had a million dollars allocated for that, for the, the school, the school in the Western Park. I haven't seen nothing done to it yet. Where's all the money going?
Thank you. Mr. Myers, do you consider poverty to be a problem in New Iberia? And if so, what can be done to address it?
Well, I think in our area, we have a lot of people on fixed incomes, you know, low-income area, limited to what they can do. But I think we can help them by way of addressing this corporate move that's being made on us, on people at Clickco with increasing their rates and address those type of things. That will help every person, not just in District Two, but throughout the city, make sure we getting a fair deal right there. I think we can start by leading the way with the city. For an example, our franchise fees and stuff that we get from these corporations, do a corporation should be doing this themselves, not put the passing that cost on to us on our bills. It was like that long ago and I don't know where we lost the hammer and control of that at, but I think we ought to regain that. I think we ought to address it even with our city operation, with our SUG. We got SUG UCC that goes up 2% every year, all right? We can take that 2% and freeze it and put a flat rate for. We can take that two percent and freeze it and put a flat rate for commercial and flat rate for residence. That would be a benefit to assisting those who have and struggling to pay bills, all right? I think those are the type of things we need to look at and address them. I mean, just seriously, because you see the water bill just went up, LACO just went up on their prices. And when LACO goes up, the sewage usage fee automatically goes up, you know? So in that part of your bill, you're almost paying more sewage usage fee than you're paying for the water itself at this point. So those are some of the things that we can do to assist those people who living in such conditions, you know? And I'm sure that would be, like again, a great assistance throughout New Iberia when it comes to that, low-income, whatever district you live in. So these are some of the things we ought to pay close attention to and attack them and, you know, go to our legislators, talk to our legislators, get these laws changed on the book where you can make contributions to people like Clicoe to stop Detroit, these corporations can bribe people like Mike Francis, for an example, you know? We need to address issues like that and work with Blake Miggas, and maybe you can do something about that and put laws on the book with respect to that, get their hands out of our pocket, you know? And we can, we can work this out, you know? We can help at least bring some, alleviate some of this strain on the city paying those bills.
Thank you. We're going to have our last question and then closing statements now. Sorry, closing statements now. Mr. Myers, you have ninety seconds for a closing statement.
Well, I'd like to say to the people throughout the city as well as just every district in the city, District Two, whenever we have issues coming before the city council, like I just spoke about the Clicoe issue and stuff, we need more to step up and speak out, you know, to address these issues. We literally need to, like I said, fix laws whereby we can't have contributions being made to people who regulate those corporations, who is running away with our money and robbing us, literally robbing us, all right? But again, I say we start with ourselves. Let's start with the city with that sewage usage fee that seem to be just going through the roof, you know? At first, when they first built the sewage plant, they told us that we would be able to pay less. We paying a flat rate of five dollars. They say that was going to decrease, but it has not. Instead, it's been fixed since two thousand and four, where instead it goes up two percent, two percent, two percent every year, all right? That's a burden on people throughout the city, not only just District Two. And they do need to alleviate some of these, some of these issues, so take some of that burden off of them, all right? Just to be fair with the city. I've never seen the council, none at this time, did anything to address something where it's helping the entire city, all right? In other words, something, everything is, we building here, we doing this, we doing that there. What about those that needing help and been paying these taxes, that you're taking money, spending outside of even their range? We need to address issues like that, address them as soon as we can, all right? Because it's to our benefit if we do it, and that will certainly make things work out better for everyone, not just in District Two, but throughout the city, you know? Thank you. Again, my name is Benjamin Myers. My number is number twenty-six on your ballot, and I ask for your vote support in this matter. Again, thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Myers. Ms. Bob?
Yes, I just want to thank you all for the opportunity. And I just know it's a lot that needs to be done. And like I said, not just on the West End, but in all the areas. And I know I would be the right person to get the job done. I've worked with the community. I have a nonprofit, a grief ministry that I've been having for nine years, a nonprofit. I've worked with people in the community. I've been at different events, helping people, feeding the community. I just have so much planned. If I get the opportunity, I promise you, a lot of things going to change, especially on our end, because it's time. It's time for a change, you know? Like I said, I be up at night, the cars passing. We need speed bumps, mixing Mississippi murders, those cars flying. You know, they have children playing, we have little handicapped kids next door to my house, you know? And it's just sad because they just doing what they want, the loud music all night, boom, boom, boom. You know, it's just, it's too much. And it's time for District Two to be attended to. So I'm Rosalyn Bob. I'm number twenty-five for twenty twenty-five. Please consider me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bob. This concludes tonight's forum for Iberia Parish Council, District Two. We certainly appreciate the time and effort put forth by the candidates here tonight. How about a round of applause for our candidates? Again, we wish all the candidates well and encourage all registered voters to exercise your right to vote in this upcoming election. Thank you.
Thank you.